We like Lake Nees Fifty.
No, uh, clear in New York Avenue.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, my sister lives on Thirty-Fifth and Ark, right by Marine Park over there, so. And I played ball in that park my whole life, so very familiar, but.
Yeah, that's cool.
I'm an old-school Brooklyn.
Now I'm a Staten Islander.
We forgive you, we forgive you, we forgive.
I went down.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please silence all electronic devices. Again, silence all electronic devices. Sergeant, is the recordings running?
Yes.
Sir?
PC recording done.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Majority Leader Keith Powers, I'd like to thank you for joining us here today and welcome everyone who's watching from afar. If you'd like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on the City Council website.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All rise. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Abreu. Ariola.
Here.
Aviles. Ayala.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Butcher.
Here.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Here.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Here.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Farias.
Present.
Felice.
Presente.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks. Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Joseph.
Here.
Kagan.
Present.
Krishna.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy.
Present.
Menon.
Here.
Moya. Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Here.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino. Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Here.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Vernikov. Williams. Juan.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Borelli. Powers.
Present.
Vernikov. Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation delivered by Reverend Dr. Charles Oliver Galbreth, the Senior Pastor of Alliance Tabernacle, which is located at thirty-three oh four Clarendon Road in Brooklyn.
All rise.
Let us look to God. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, God who has brought us thus far along the way. God of us all, we thank you and honor you for this day. We pray that you would endow us with your power, presence, and protection. Cast your caring eye on this council, its members, their family, and staff. We pray that you would bless each member and their staff with wisdom, justice, mercy, and love. Rest your radiant gaze not just upon them, but all of New York City and all of your people. Now, God, help us in the words of Proverbs, to speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of those who are destitute. Help us to speak up and to judge fairly, to defend the rights of the poor and the needy. Help us, in the words of Dr. King, to not merely be thermometers that record the ideas and principles of popular opinion, but rather thermostats that transform the mores of society. God, please remind us that our budgets are moral documents. Help us, in the words of Jesus, to proclaim good news to the poor, freedom to the captives, recovery of sight to the blind, and freedom to the oppressed. God, while our city faces challenges, we also know that the challenges may be great, but God is also great. Where there is sickness, would there be a healing? Where there is violence, would you show up as the prince of peace? Where there is financial uncertainty, would you show up as a God who provides? And where those who are in need, would you show up as a rock in a weary land? We pray, God, that you would anoint our heads with oil. We declare that our ladder shall be greater than our paths. And we declare that no weapon formed against us shall prosper. And as I say in Brooklyn, point blank period. We lift this up in respect to all the various religious traditions and those who do not share religious traditions, but I personally pray this. In Jesus' name, amen and amen.
Thank you for those words. Thank you for being with us here today. I'd now like to ask Councilmember Farrah Lewis to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I am honored to have esteemed Dr. Reverend Charles Galbreth, Senior Pastor of Alliance Tabernacle, formerly known as Clarendon Road Church in my district in East Flatbush, Brooklyn, providing the invocation and blessing our activities and chambers today. Pastor Galbreth, thank you for being here. Pastor Charles is an instrumental figure in my community and beyond, also known as a young hip pastor, known for the powerful catchphrase, "No weapon formed against me shall prosper," point blank period. He serves as the Associate Dean and Partnering Professor at Alliance Theological Seminary in New York City. He's a District Executive Committee Member and Vice President of the Association of African-American Church for the Christian and Missionary Alliance Domination. In the Forty-Fifth Council District, Pastor Charles is a strong and active Community Board Member in East Flatbush for Community Board Seventeen. He's also, uh, serves on the Advisory Board for CUNY Downstate and a Treasurer for the Six Seven Present Clergy Council, also known as The God Squad. His activities in my district range with outreach needs for our neighbors, programs for spiritual enrichment and public safety, and he's even a mentor for many who are seeking to both expand their spiritual and civic engagement levels. Beyond his outstanding participation in ministry and community engagement, I've known Reverend Galbreth before I started the crazy world of politics, before I became a council member. His deep understanding of faith comes through a history of theological training and preparation as the son of a preacher and pastor graduating magna cum laude from NIAA College and earning his PhD from Fordham University's Graduate School of Religion and Religious Education. His dedication to scholarship and community is continual. Thank you, Pastor Galbreth, for bringing forth compassion, wellness, and unity in my district, central Brooklyn, and beyond. With that, I am now, I now make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. I will now have the call on Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez for the adoption of the minutes.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meetings of June eighth, twenty twenty-three, and June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three be adopted as printed.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll now have messages and papers from the mayor.
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
None.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
M one seventy-one, Madison Square Garden, special permit.
Cubald on call-up vote, I now ask that the clerk take a roll. Call vote on today's land use call-up items.
Abreu. Salamanca.
I request permission to vote on all items on today's agenda.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I vote aye on all items on today's agenda and vote to approve introductions numbers two-two-nine-A, eight-seven-eight-A, eight-nine-three-A, and eight-nine-four, notwithstanding the objections of the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mealy.
I request permission to vote on all items on today's agenda.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I vote aye on all items on today's agenda and vote to approve introduction numbers two-two-nine-A, eight-seven-eight-A, eight-nine-three-A, eight-nine-four-A, notwithstanding the objections of the mayor. And I just want to thank my forty-first Councilmatic District for re-electing me. And before I go, I just hope everyone, don't let the summer heat blow your fuse. And I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Abreu. Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
I request permission to vote on all items on today's agenda. Oops. Hello?
Just hold on one second.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I'm so sorry. So I vote aye on all items on today's agenda and vote to approve introduction numbers to two-twenty-nine-A, eight-seventy-eight-A, eight-ninety-three-A, and eight-ninety-four-A, notwithstanding the objections of the mayor. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ayala.
I vote aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Butcher.
Aye.
Brannon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
I request permission to vote on all items on today's agenda.
Go ahead.
I vote aye on all items on today's agenda and vote to approve introduction numbers to twen- two-twenty-nine-A, eight-seven-eight-A, eight-nine-three-A, and eight-nine-four-A, notwithstanding the objections of the mayor. I'd also like to say that I'm proud to be introduced in legislation today to generate a yearly report on drownings and encourage my colleagues in the council to sign on. Thank you.
Thank you. Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Kagan.
Aye.
Krishna.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Thank you. Menon.
Aye.
Moya. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Palladino.
Oh, aye.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye.
Richardson Jordan.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Thank you. Velasquez. Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Juan.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Borelli. Powers.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by vote of forty-six in the affirmative, zero negative. We'll have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin, I want to take a moment to remember the lives of New Yorkers who died while on the job over these past few weeks. We are mourning the death of thirty-eight-year-old Michael Rodriguez, a city worker in my district, who was killed in a car accident involving a drunk driver last week. He worked for the Department of Environmental Protection as a sewer maintenance worker, and our city was made better by his dedicated public service. Our city also lost thirty-five-year-old Basam Katib, a deli owner from Staten Island who was killed during an attempted robbery in his store. Our thoughts are with their families and loved ones. Earlier this month, we lost fourteen-year-old Waleed, who tragically died on the shores of Rockaway Beach. The pain of losing a child is heart-wrenching, and we're saddened by his loss, and we are praying for his family during this difficult time. As the summer continues, I want to remind all New Yorkers and visitors to please take precautions and to swim in our city's beaches only when a lifeguard is present. It is incumbent upon us as a city to provide more free swimming lessons for New Yorkers, and especially for our children, so that everyone can access this lifesaving skill. I'm glad that we are taking steps to improve access as a city. Over last weekend, a series of senseless shootings in southeast Queens in Brooklyn has shaken our communities. Our entire city is grieving the loss of eighty-six-year-old Sheikh Hamud Sayidi, who was killed while walking in his neighborhood of Richmond Hill. Three other neighbors were injured by this deplorable act of violence in our hearts, so with their families as well. While I personally didn't have the honor of knowing Hamud, what I have learned is that he was a caring family man who loved his community. Hamud was a father of six children, thirty grandchildren, and thirty-one great-grandchildren. He was a pillar in the Yemeni community. While his loss will stay with us forever, his life and legacy will never, ever be forgotten. I met Hamud's family earlier this week at a vigil in his memory hosted by our Queensborough President. The family, I believe, is joining us today. We salute the Hamud family, and we are heartily sorry for your loss. Please accept our prayers for your beloved Sheikh Hamud Sayidi. Last weekend's shootings are a reminder of the work we must continue to do as a city to make our communities safer. We must continue to make necessary investments as well as pursue federal legislation in partnership with our colleagues in Washington to codify laws that stop the proliferation of illegal weapons in our communities. Now, I'd like to discuss the City FEP's voucher bills that this council enacted to tackle the record-high homelessness and eviction crisis. I want to be clear. These bills are about helping the lowest-income New Yorkers facing homelessness and housing insecurity. They've always been about these New Yorkers, and it has been disconcerting to see it misconstrued that somehow these bills would open the program to people in our city who are not in greatest need. No one wants to live in poverty and experience the challenges it creates. This package of bills is focused on ensuring the city does all it can to help these New Yorkers access housing security to avoid homelessness. These bills are the most significant policy reforms to address homelessness with our, within our city in years. The fact that we're responsible for advancing solutions of this significance is something to be very proud of. There are over fifty thousand long-term New Yorkers in our shelter system, creating record levels. These bills are aimed at removing barriers to access vouchers as a pathway out for them. We know that other barriers remain and must be a focus of our collective efforts to address, whether it's source of income discrimination or building and preserving more housing. This council has been committed to advancing these efforts together with the administration, and even in the face of challenges, we must continue that pursuit. New York City is also in the midst of an intense eviction crisis that risks putting more New Yorkers into homelessness. Over the last eighteen months and since the state eviction moratorium expired, there have been over one hundred seventy-eight thousand eviction notices filed in the city of New York. These bills are also aimed at removing barriers faced by the lowest income of these New Yorkers to accessing vouchers that can help them avoid losing their homes and becoming unhoused. The claim that using vouchers to prevent evictions would create more competition for voucher holders in shelters is absolutely incorrect. Every New Yorker at the lowest income levels that we can help avoid eviction through the use of City FEP's vouchers is another crisis averted and another person we've prevented from entering the shelter system in the first place. In fact, this proactive approach stops forcing people into shelters by making them eligible for vouchers and relieves the added competition for those seeking housing with vouchers in a limited housing supply. There is no need to pit lowest-income New Yorkers who are facing homelessness and housing insecurity against one another. Now, let's talk about the costs. Too often, government fails to account for the comprehensive costs that result from harmful outcomes to its constituents, and homelessness is no different. The impacts of slipping into homelessness for a family or individual are immense. They're not only borne by those directly affected, but entire communities and our whole city. There are the shelter costs, which are immense. Housing a family of two in an emergency hotel shelter for one year costs more than housing that same family in a two-bedroom apartment using a City FEP's voucher for five years. Yet, there are also the educational, health, justice system, and other costs that are created when people become and remain homeless. The city's largest homeless shelter provider, WIN, conducted an analysis of the bills that accounted for these comprehensive costs, building on the work of Community Service Society. It found that the bills and their upfront investment in vouchers would be more than offset by the savings from the averted costs of homelessness, saving the city over seven-hundred-thirty million dollars each year. During a time of record homelessness, it is critical that we respond with the urgency and strength needed to address the scale of this crisis. We know there are many challenges that contribute to our record homelessness, and solving them will require many solutions that we must collectively advance. The thousands of vacant supportive housing and NYCHA units must be a priority for us to utilize. We also have to ensure adequate support and staffing for the agencies responsible for confronting these challenges, whether through housing, homeless services, eviction prevention, voucher discrimination enforcement, or other human services. The housing crisis and shortage of housing is one of the biggest challenges that the mayor and I have both acknowledged and worked collaboratively to address. We must continue those collective efforts, because until we have enough housing in our city, we will continue to face immense housing pressures that feed these problems. This includes all types of housings, including truly affordable housing and supportive housing that has languished from a lack of investment. These bills passed with a veto-proof majority because this council recognizes the scale of challenges contributing to homelessness. We are willing to do whatever it takes to keep New Yorkers in their homes and avoid evictions and more quickly transition from shelters. I'm very proud of this council for its commitment to advancing these solutions today, and we will need to do far more to address the housing crisis. My hope is that after today, we can put aside our differences with the administration on this issue to advance the countless issues related to it that demand our attention and collaboration. New Yorkers need us to do this. Our city needs us to do this. Next week marks the twentieth anniversary of the assassination of former council member James E. Davis. The shooting on July twenty-third, two thousand and three, right here in this very chamber, was one of the most harrowing experiences that this body has ever experienced. Councilmembers Jim Gennaro, Gail Brewer, and Charles Barron, as well as several staff members, were all here when the shooting occurred, and they can all attest to the great public servant that council member Davis was. Colleagues, our members lounge was dedicated in his memory, and I want to take this time to remember him today, ahead of the twentieth anniversary of his death. July is Disability Pride Month, a time when we celebrate and uplift the history, contributions, and experiences of New Yorkers with disabilities. This month commemorates the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the historic legislation that promotes inclusivity and accessibility in our country. legislation that promotes inclusivity and accessibility in our country. This council has prioritized legislation and efforts to support people with disabilities in our city, and we will continue to strengthen and expand those policies. Two weeks ago, more than one million Muslim New Yorkers celebrated Eid al-Aidad. This holiday is a time to reflect on the importance of values like community, compassion, and charity. I hope everyone who celebrated had a joyful, peaceful, and blessed holiday. Eid Mubarak. There are several other holidays of importance that I want to recognize this month. Monday was Bahamas Independence Day. This year marks the fiftieth anniversary of Bahamas' independence from Great Britain, so please join me in celebrating our city's Bahamian community. July twentieth is Colombian Independence Day. Our city is home to a large Colombian community that has contributed so much to our communities, I hope. Our Colombian community here in New York City has a happy and safe celebration. July twenty-sixth is Tish Abuf, a day of fasting prayer and reflection observed by our Jewish communities. Although this is a somber day that highlights the destruction of temples and tragedies inflicted on Jewish people throughout history, it also serves as a reminder that we must come together to protect and uplift each other in this city. Next, please join me in wishing a very happy early birthday to council members Rita Joseph, Tiffany Caban, and Minority Leader Joe Borelli. I also want to announce that today is the last stated day for our very own, my former council under the Landmarks Committee for last session, our very own Angelina Martinez-Rubio, Deputy General Counsel of the Planning and Land Use Division. During her time in the council, Angelina served as counsel to the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises and the Subcommittee, my former committee, the Subcommittee on Landmarks Dispositions and Public Sightings. She advised myself and other council members on numerous projects throughout the Five Burrows, including the citywide text amendments for open restaurants, the SoHo-NoHo rezoning, Innovation Queens, and so many others. After five years of outstanding work in the council, Angelina will be moving on to a new opportunity in public service, and we wish her all the best. Today is also the last stated meeting for Malak Nasarradin, Assistant Deputy Director of the Infrastructure Division in Council's Legislative Division. Malak has been with the council for six years and previously served as a council for the Transportation and for Higher Vehicles Committees, where she guided the work of our Taxi Medallion Task Force. Thank you, Malak, for your work in this council. On behalf of the entire City Council, we thank you both for your dedication, and we wish you all the best of luck. Thank you for your service to the city of New York. And finally, colleagues, we are celebrating Council Baby Number Six. And I am so happy to share that we have a new member of our extended council family. Hardy, congratulations to Council Member Crystal Hudson. And her family on the birth of their beautiful baby daughter. Congratulations, Crystal and Sasha. Now, we can move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. Sixteen fifty-six West Tenth Street rezoning will facilitate a new six-story residential building with ground-floor community facility space. It will include twenty-four housing units, approximately six affordable units under MIH Option 1, and ten accessory off-street parking spaces in Council Member Jaeger's District. We're also voting on two applications in Council Member Palladino's District. One-eighty-nine-ten Northern Boulevard Commercial Overlay. As a result of the applicant having withdrawn this application, the council will be voting to file this land use item to remove it from our calendar. Forty-third Avenue demapping, an application for demapping and disposing a portion of Forty-third Avenue with an existing encroachment. The council will be voting on a resolution to disapprove this application. Lastly, we'll vote on the following pieces of legislation. First, Introduction eight-fifty-three A, sponsored by Council Member Joanne Areola, requires the Department of Transportation to install mile markers along the designated sections of Cross Bay Boulevard, Beach Channel Drive, and Rockaway Point Boulevard, all of which are major arteries around the Rockaways. The new signage will help motorists who are stranded or experience car issues and need to communicate their location to support services. Thank you to our staff members Mark Chen, Sam Breidbart, John Basile, and Kevin Kautowski. Next, Introduction six-forty-five B, sponsored by me, will strengthen the pathway to civil service for justice-involved New Yorkers by requiring the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to administer civil service exams in the city's forthcoming borough-based jails. This bill would authorize decaf to waive the civil service exam fee for justice-involved individuals and require the city to provide information and support to justice-involved New Yorkers who wish to learn more about the exam process. It is critical that we continue to expand equitable access to opportunities for all New Yorkers to enter our city's workforce. This is a bill that I first introduced in my State of the City last year, and I'm very proud that the council will be passing it today. Thank you to our staff members Ri Ogasawa and Elizabeth Arts. Introduction ten-seventy-four A, sponsored by Council Member Crystal Hudson, would prohibit the use of city resources to detain any person for seeking, obtaining, providing, or facilitating gender-affirming care in New York or outside New York in circumstances where it would have been lawful had it happened in our state. This bill would also prohibit the use of city resources to cooperate with an investigation of a person on the grounds that such person is known or believed to have sought, obtained, provided, or facilitated gender-affirming care outside of New York when their conduct would have been lawful had it occurred here. Thank you to our staff member Chris Pepe. Introduction eight-eighty-seven B, sponsored by public advocate Jemani Williams, would require the Department of Correction to report quarterly about the housing placements of transgender, gender nonconforming, nonbinary, or intersex individuals within DOC's custody. Thank you to our staff members Jeremy Whiteman and Natalie Meltzer. Next, we will vote on two bills that aim to reduce New Yorkers' exposure to lead and increase enforcement of existing lead laws. Lead-based paint remains a public health hazard, especially for children. The package we're voting on today will strengthen implementation of lead prevention and reduction efforts as we continue to take critical actions to ensure that families are safe and healthy. Introduction two-hundred A, sponsored by Council Member Rafael Salamanca, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to submit a semi-annual publicly-available report on the number of objections filed by multiple dwelling owners to DOHMH lead abatement orders. The report would be required to specify the reasons why any objections are found to have merit, including faulty testing or paint sampling, or an exemption based on the dwelling construction date. Thank you to our staff member, once again, Chris Pepe and Sandra Suker. Introduction one-ninety-three A, sponsored by Council Member Carlina Rivera, would categorize lead-based paint that is peeling or on a deteriorated surface in the common areas of a residential building as an immediately hazardous violation. The bill also strengthens inspection requirements for common areas when there are children living in the building. Thank you to our staff members Mark Chen and Taylor Zalone. Next, we will vote on some of the legislative actions that are part of the council's mental health roadmap envisioned by Mental Health Committee Chair Lynda Lee. Chair Lee, Majority Leader Keith Powers, Council Member Botcher, and I released this roadmap with advocates last year to improve mental health outcomes in our city. It focuses on addressing existing challenges in the city's mental health care landscape and strengthening the infrastructure and investments in evidence-based solutions at the community level. Last month, we passed several of the legislative items from the roadmap, and today, we're voting on the rest of the proposals in the roadmap. We look forward to continuing this work in partnership with service providers, advocates, community members, and all stakeholders. I especially want to thank Chair Lee for her leadership in moving this roadmap forward. Introduction ten-twenty-one A, sponsored by Majority Leader Keith Powers, would require the mayor to establish four new crisis respite centers in the city to provide individuals with mental illness with better access to community-based, peer-run facilities that are alternatives to emergency hospitalization. Introduction ten-twenty-two A, sponsored by Council Member Kevin Riley, would require the mayor to establish five new clubhouses for individuals with serious mental illness. The clubhouse model emphasizes community and provides wraparound services and opportunities for social connection, including group activities, peer support, job readiness skills, and transitional employment opportunities. And lastly, we're voting on two bills sponsored by the architect of the mental health roadmap, Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction Committee Chair Lynda Lee. Introduction ten-eighteen A would require the Office of Community Mental Health, in conjunction with the New York Police Department, New York City Fire Department, and other relevant agencies, to provide a publicly-accessible annual report to the council on the mayor's involuntary removals and transport directive. Information shall include the number of and legal basis for the removals conducted, the number of nine-one-one calls that resulted in removals, information on the locations of removals and where individuals are transported, and demographic information of those removed and transported. Introduction ten-nineteen A would require OCMH to maintain access to an interactive map of the locations, contact information, and payment information, including insurance accepted of mental health service provided. Thank you to our staff members Sarah Suker and Kristi Dwyer. Lastly, we will vote on the veto override for our City PEPs voucher legislation. Introduction two-twenty-nine A, sponsored by Council Member Tiffany Caban, allows for full utilization of the full cost of City PEPs vouchers by prohibiting the Department of Social Services from deducting a utility allowance from the maximum amount of a voucher except in limited circumstances. Second, Introduction two-twenty-nine A, sponsored by Council Member Tiffany Caban, would prohibit the Department of Social Services from deducting a utility allowance from the maximum amount of a City PEPs voucher except in limited circumstances. Finally, Introduction eight-ninety-three A, sponsored by Council Member Pirina Sanchez, removes certain Department of Social Services criteria that determine eligibility for City PEPs and gives New Yorkers the ability to demonstrate risk of eviction by presenting a rent-demand letter. Introduction eight-ninety-four A, also sponsored by Council Member Sanchez, changes the eligibility for a City PEPs voucher from two-hundred percent of the federal poverty level to fifty percent of the area median income, and eases work and source-of-income requirements that make it difficult for New Yorkers to pursue employment and housing at the same time. Thank you very much to our staff members David Romero and Amita Kilowan. Thank you very much for your attention, and now I will turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We're now going to move into discussion of general orders. We will begin with Council Member Rivera, followed by Council Member Riley.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. Today, we will vote on a piece of legislation that I am glad to have sponsored. Introduction one-nine-three will create an immediately hazardous violation for the existence of lead-based paint in any common area of a multiple dwelling where a child under the age of six resides, if such paint is peeling or is on a deteriorated subsurface. New York City has some of the strongest laws and programs designed to address the ongoing crisis of lead exposure, but without adequate enforcement and comprehensive regulations, our communities are quite literally being left in the dust. Despite decades of significant advances and the fact that childhood lead poisoning is completely preventable, too many children are still exposed to lead, and progress has plateaued. Building common areas allows neighbors to gather and interact, promoting community, support systems, and a sense of belonging, and by addressing lead exposure risk in common areas, we move one step closer to a more healthy New York City. It is well documented that lead can cause long-term irreversible negative health impacts and can reduce a child's learning capacity and academic achievement. According to city data in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven New York City children under six years of age were identified with dangerous blood lead levels, and eighty-one percent of children under six identified with dangerously high blood levels are Asian, Black, or Latino. Eighty-eight percent of children with elevated blood lead levels reside in moderate-to-high poverty neighborhoods, and as of March two thousand and twenty-three, forty-five percent of all lead-related court cases in New York City were in the Bronx. This legislation builds on decades of progress, and we know there is more work to do. I thank the Cooper Square Committee, the Lead Dust Free NYC Coalition, and the New York City Coalition to Ed Lead Poisoning, among so many other groups who worked with my office to craft this bill, my team, committee staff, and all who are committed to ensuring a future free of lead. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll hear from Councilwoman Riley, followed by Councilmember Caban.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Now more than ever, we must eliminate the stigma on mental illness and expand access to holistic care for those grappling with mental health challenges. Supportive resources are crucial to New Yorkers in need. Understanding we are facing challenges across city agency and staffing, new models of supportive peer care are crucial to covering those in need. The council is committed to addressing our city's mental health crisis, and by expanding resources and support to uplift New Yorkers coping with serious mental health illnesses. With the passing of my legislation, Intro ten-twenty-two A, our city will establish five new clubhouses, safe havens that provide wraparound services for individuals facing serious mental illnesses. We will expand access to these services by widening the scope to treat disorders included but not limited to schizophrenia, mood disorders such as bipolar or major depressive disorders, anxiety disorders, or PTSD. This bill makes pathways for inter-agency connection with service providers such as the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and the Mayor's Office of Community Health. As a strong advocate for mental wellness, I am proud to partner with my colleagues in government, community-based organizations, and advocacy groups to strengthen our city's commitment to addressing our city's mental health crisis. Thank you to our speaker, Chair Lee, my colleagues who co-sponsored this legislation, and all the advocates and stakeholders for making this effort to pass Intro ten-twenty-two A today. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll go to Councilmember Caban, followed by Councilman Palladino.
Thank you. First, thank you to all of the advocates who made this possible again, and I want to also begin by saying how proud I am to stand with my colleagues Deputy Speaker Ayala, Chair Sanchez, and of course, Speaker Adams. As I said before, Madam Speaker, your rock-solid, unwavering leadership on this issue will be felt by many struggling families throughout the Five Burrows, and today's show of strength could not have happened without your backbone, your commitment, and your refusal to be bullied. And let's be clear: What we are pushing through today is a commonsense, cost-effective legislative package that will move struggling New Yorkers from the shelter system into permanent housing more efficiently. Period. And any claims that it is fiscally imprudent or logistically impractical are at best flagrant errors and at worst outright lies. Then again, the mayor's veto comes as no surprise, given the rest of his disastrous approach to housing. Imposing annual rent hikes via his handpicked board, starving the Department of Housing Preservation and Development of staff through repeated budget cuts, including forty-three million dollars in FY24's adopted budget when compared to last year's modified budget, forcing New Yorkers facing eviction to represent themselves in court by allocating less than five percent of what the right-to-counsel providers say they desperately need, forcibly removing thousands of our homeless neighbors only to place a grand total of three in permanent housing. Not three thousand, not three hundred, not three dozen, just three. The mayor's so-called "City of Yes" appears to be a city of yes to big real estate and a big fat no to working-class and low-income New Yorkers. And so today, Mr. Mayor, not this time. With our vote, the members of the People's Elected Council are putting our foot down. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll hear from Councilmember Palladino, followed by Councilmember Sanchez.
Good afternoon, everybody. Demapping this site on Forty-third Avenue between two-hundred-and-twenty-second Street and two-hundred-and-twenty-third Street would have a negative impact on our community. The existing retaining wall encroaches on public land, undermines the design, obstructs pedestrian access, and conflicts with the current conditions of the neighborhood. The property owner should rebuild a wall within his own property lines, consistent with the character of the community, instead of seeking to legalize an unlawful encroachment. Privatizing public land for two homeowners to benefit should not take precedence over our neighborhood's well-being. I urge all of my colleagues to please vote yes on Land Use two-thirty-one and accompanying Reso seven-twenty, which will disapprove this demapping, protect our community's integrity, and ensure the sustainability and sustain the environment for all our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll hear from Councilwoman Sanchez, followed by Councilmember Lee.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. Good afternoon. I am so... I am so incredibly proud of this moment for our city council. Thank you so much for your steadfast leadership, Speaker, and you know, to our Deputy Speaker, Councilmember Caban, and everyone who will stand with us today in affirmatively voting for this package of FEPs voucher reforms. I just thank you from the bottom of my heart. This package of legislation represents comprehensive solutions to help people stay in their homes while providing those in shelter a stronger pathway to secure permanent housing. And you know, one thing that I have struggled with in terms of the reporting and the conversation and all of the discussion that there has been over the past weeks is the human element of what we are doing here today. So let me tell you about Maria, a mother of four, who lives in my district, who works while her children are in school and while she has childcare, but at the end of the month cannot make ends meet, and has a structural issue with being able to afford the community that raised her and where she is attempting to raise her children. That is who 893 helps. Isabel is a senior on fixed income. She just retired. She earns $800 per month from Social Security, and at the end of the month, she struggles to pay that $1,200 per month. By the way, $1,200 per month in a rent-stabilized unit is much, much less expensive than a new voucher that you would get, a new apartment that you would get after being evicted, after being in shelter, and finally, becoming eligible after months in shelter. And finally, the kids at IS 206 in my district, I represent some of the highest percentages of schools, some of the schools with the highest percentage of children who are living in temporary housing. So to those amazing, vibrant, resilient, happy children who go to IS 206 after commuting from a shelter in Queens to get to school, this is for them. Thank you so much for standing on behalf, or standing with these families. This package of legislation is the right thing to do, and I'm thankful.
Thank you. And I'll hear from Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmember Barron.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader, and colleagues. As Chair of the Mental Health, Disabilities and Addictions Committee, I am proud that today the city council will vote to pass four pieces of legislation that are part of the mental health roadmap, including two of my own. Intro 1018A will require the Mayor's Office of Community Mental Health to provide an annual report to the council with information regarding the mayor's involuntary transport directive. And I love data. I think it's important for us to collect that data and know what it is so that we can pivot, see where we can make improvements, and also have that information necessary to address any further issues. This roadmap recognizes the need to limit the decades-long intersection between mental health care and the criminal justice system, and Intro 1018A ensures that the council provides crucial oversight to deliver community-based services to individuals in need of mental health treatment. The second bill, Intro 1019A, will require OCMH to create and maintain an interactive map of the locations, contact information, and payment information of mental health services providers included in New York City's mental health database. And as someone who ran social services and mental health programs, it is very confusing at times to figure out where to go to seek help and services. We are a resource-rich city, and it can be understandably confusing when navigating so many different government programs and entities. The mental health roadmap, I just want to reiterate, remains a holistic, multi-pronged approach that focuses on adequate investments into more effective, preventive, and responsive evidence-based models. Models that ensure that people are plugged into resources and served as New York City improves the continuum of care and combats the mental health crisis after years and years of disinvestment. I thank my staff, the council committee staff, as well as the dedicated efforts of my colleagues on the Mental Health Committee, Disabilities and Addictions Committee, and the leadership of Speaker Adams for helping me bring this legislation to the floor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'll hear from Councilmember Barron.
Shame on you, Mayor. How dare you, with a budget of $107 billion, not want to be concerned about, as you said, Mayor, you are guided by God in dealing with policy. Well, the Bible says you should be concerned about the least of these, and God has always been on the side of the oppressed, on the side of those who are in most need. But not you, Mayor. Here you come. Plenty money, but you don't have money for those who are at risk of eviction and the homeless? The only thing you want to do for the homeless is remove their personal items? Things that they cherish so that your millionaire backers can have a city that they feel more comfortable investing in? Shame on you, Mayor. This is ridiculous that we got to override something that is so fundamentally basic to human rights, a place to live. You don't want to expand vouchers, rental assistance, to those most in need, you know? But for the grace of God, there go you. One day, you might be in this kind of need, and I hope there's a council around that'll remember what you've done to those who are in need most. This is a shame, a disgrace. This is an attack on your morality, your values. The Bible also said, "Where one's treasure is, so lies one's heart." You're a heartless mayor, because your treasure is not for those who are in need most, the homeless and those who are at risk of being evicted. This council is doing the right thing today, and I hope we continue to stand up to this mayor.
Do we have any other members signed up right now to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move into the Report of Special Committees.
None.
Reports of Standing Committees.
Report of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor, Intro 645B, Civil Service Exams in Department of Correction Facilities.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Intro 887B, Gender Identity Reporting in Department of Correction Facilities.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Motion to File M163, M164, M165, and M166, and Mayor's Veto, Messages of Intros 229A, 878A, 893A, and 894A.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Intros 229A, 878A, 893A, and 894A, Rental Assistance Vouchers.
Pursuant to Rules 9.10 and 9.60, coupled as a separate question.
Report of the Committee on Health, Intro 200A, Objections to Lead Abatement Orders.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1074A, Gender Affirming Care.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 193A, Lead-Based Paint Hazards.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 230 and Reso 719, 18910 Northern Boulevard Commercial Overlay.
Coupled to be filed pursuant to letter of withdrawal.
LU 231 and Reso 720, 43rd Avenue Demapping.
Motion to Disapprove.
LU 237 and Reso 721, and LU 238 and Reso 722, 1656 West 10th Street Resoning.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction, Intros 1018A, 1019A, 1021A, and 1022A, Mental Health Roadmap Legislative Package.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro 853A, Intermediate Reference Location Signs.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders.
Before we move into the vote on general orders, we will now consider the four bills vetoed by Mayor Adams. These bills are introductory numbers 229A of 2022, 878A of 2023, 893A of 2023, and 894A of 2023, out of our General Welfare Committee. The question before the council now is, shall these bills pass, the objection of the mayor notwithstanding? I will now call on the clerk to conduct a roll-call vote on the four bills that were vetoed by Mayor Adams.
Abreu.
Aye.
Thank you. Ariola.
No.
Ayala.
I'd probably vote aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Butcher.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
I vote aye, and I just want to say as certainly thank you to the Speaker, Councilmember Ayala, and others. I do think that some of those who are working in this field, like Christine Quinn and others, who are experts in how you keep people out of shelter, these are the folks who are supportive of these four bills. Obviously, the one that is mostly supported by the mayor and the city council is the 90-day rule, but the other three make sense. The question I would suggest before the mayor goes to court, great dollars to corporation council, public dollars, et cetera, to sit down with the Christine Quins, the people who do the work, city council members, and figure out how altogether we can figure out how to affordable housing, keep people out of shelter, and make sure they're able to stay in their apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
No.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Yes.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye on all, and also as a former tenant lawyer who worked with a lot of families who were previously homeless, I just got to say I'm very, very, very proud of all of my colleagues. Thank you so much. Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Holden.
No.
Hudson.
Proudly vote aye.
Thank you. Joseph.
Aye.
Kagan.
No.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember. Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
Aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
I happily vote aye. Thank you to all the colleagues and the coalition members who put so much time and energy into making this actual solutions package. Thank you so much.
Osay.
Nymphatic aye, and thank you for your leadership, Speaker Adams, and all the advocates involved.
Palladino.
No.
Wrestler.
Proud to vote aye on this one, and I also want to express deep gratitude to the leadership in this council for overriding this veto, for pushing such a bold package that will actually deliver real housing solutions for homeless New Yorkers. So thank you to the Speaker, thank you to the Deputy Speaker, and to Councilmember Sanchez and Caban, and the amazing coalition behind this. Thank you.
Richardson. Jordan.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Just permission to say something briefly.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to say this legislation is much needed and passed the council with a veto-proof majority already. So to turn this issue into a saga while so many struggle to pay rent and face eviction and languish in the shelter system is shameful, but as a council, we persisted, and I am very proud that we remain focused and unwavering, and I do hope there is continued collaboration or at least some sort of realization of the housing crisis that we were in and that we can do something together. I proudly vote aye. Thank you to all.
Sanchez.
Permission to explain?
Go ahead.
I just want to thank, from the bottom of my heart, the advocates Win Make the Road, Homeless Services United, Legally Society Vocal, New Destiny Housing, New York Immigration Coalition, and of course, the incredible team, the staff members, whose name isn't on or aren't on these bills, but who were instrumental, Sam Cardenas, my Chief of Staff, Kadim Robinson, my Legislative and Communications Director of my entire office, sorry, very emotional, Amenta, David Romero, Andrea Vasquez, Jeff Baker, Jeremy Johns, so many, so many folks. And with that, Distrito 14 para todo lo que han entrado y me han pedido apartamento, esto es para ustedes. District 14, for everyone who has come into the office in tears asking me for help, this is for you. I vote aye.
Thank you. Shulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Velasquez.
Aye.
Thank you. Vernikov.
No on all.
Williams.
I vote aye.
Juan.
Aye.
Jaeger.
No.
Borelli.
No.
Powers.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
I just want to thank Deputy Speaker Ayala for truly bringing personal experience into every piece of this legislation. Many of us have family members who have been in the shelter situation. We can bring personal experience to this. This is a personal matter for many of us. The fact that we have to override a veto is incomprehensible to me. Deputy Speaker Ayala, I want to say thank you for always sharing your personal experience of living in shelter, of being a part of the population that we in this council are fighting with every fiber of our being to help in this moment. I proudly vote aye on all.
These bills are passed with a vote of 42 in the affirmative, eight in the negative, and zero abstentions. Hold on, please hold your... Folks. Please hold your applause. Madam Speaker, the city council votes to override the mayor's veto with two votes, more than two votes voting in the affirmative.
Okay. We're going to move on. Thank you, Majority Leader Powers. I would now ask the clerk to take a roll-call vote on all of the remaining items on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Ariola.
Aye on all with the exception of Intro 193A.
Ayala.
I vote aye.
Barron.
I vote no on LU 237, accompanying reso 721, no on LU 238, accompanying reso 722, and aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Butcher.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
No on Introduction 193A, and aye on the rest.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks. Holden.
Aye on all.
Hudson.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Joseph.
Aye.
Kagan.
No on 193A, and aye on everything else.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
I vote aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Thank you. Menon.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Moya. Councilmember Moya. We'll come back. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Majority Leader, permission to explain my vote for two seconds?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge this weekend in my district, a young man, Cesar Martinez, was shot by the active shooter who also shot for in the under- in the under, other divisions in Queens, and just wanted to extend my thoughts to his family. He was shot outside of our public library in Cypress Hills in the Arlington branch. And one of our community members found him and called 911, and I just want to uplift the family today. I spoke with his mom Denise and grandmother Anna, and just want to send love their way. And on, with that, I vote aye on everything else.
Thank you. Osay.
Aye on all.
Palladino.
Aye on all except for 193A.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Richardson, Jordan.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Velasquez. Hold on one second. Please silence your phone.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Velasquez. Vernikov.
Aye on all except no on intro 193A. Thank you.
Williams.
I would aye on all.
Thank you. Juan.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye on all with the exception of introduction 193. Thank you.
Borelli.
I don't know. I kind of like hearing the little kid cry better than, better than some of you got. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Permission to vote. Permission to vote.
Just kidding.
On all land use call-ups? In addition to the general orders?
Go ahead.
I vote aye on all except 193A. Thank you.
Thank you. Powers.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Aye on all.
Councilmember Moya. All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of introduction 193A, adopted by a vote of 43 in the affirmative, seven negative and zero abstentions, land use item 237 and 238 and accompanying resolutions, adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, one negative and zero abstentions, and a revised land use call-ups vote of 47 in the affirmative and zero negative. We'll now move on to the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. There are no resolutions on today's calendar, so we'll now move into the general discussion. We'll start with Councilmember Gennaro, followed by Councilmember Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. I just want to bring to my colleagues' attention some bills and resos that I'm bringing forward. I'm not usually a big one for resos, but we got a problem with regard to funding from the federal bipartisan infrastructure law that provides for funding for removing lead service lines, which remain a threat in New York City. So, this reso 714 calls upon the State Department of Health and the State Environmental Facilities Corporation to fairly provide grants and to remove all the rules that are in existence now that prevent New York City from getting its fair share of funding. We're going to be making some noise on this, and we're looking for support on that. Reso 715 calls upon the Water Board, which operates in secret a lot, to notify our offices at least 30 days before any public hearings so that we, meaning our offices, can share this information with our constituents and community boards and make sure that they are able to participate by having the knowledge that these hearings on the Water Board and water rates are going on. And intro 1122, which would allow for the consolidation of reporting requirements for Local Law 87, that's a benchmarking and energy audit bill that I did a long time ago. The reporting for that will trip over some of the reporting that has to go on for Local Law 97. It's kind of a housekeeping bill, but it's going to mean a lot for people that have to file all the reports that associated with Local Law 97, Local 87. And in 22 seconds I have left, I just want to thank the Speaker in a very, very special way for recalling the memory of our beloved fallen colleague, James Davis. He was a really sweet guy, and he sat in my row, and he was just, just a beloved member of this council, and I'm happy that the council saw fit to recognize him today. So, God bless. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, Councilmember Barron. We have to do a revised order, revised tally of the votes. All items on today's general order calendar were adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, zero negative, zero abstentions, with the exception of introduction 193A, adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, seven negative and zero abstentions, and land use two items 237 and 238 and accompanying resolutions, adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, one negative and zero abstentions. I'll now call on Councilmember Barron, followed by Councilmember Brewer.
Don't start the clock yet. I'm sure the Speaker wouldn't mind because my beautiful African queen wife is here. My wife of 40 years, 36 years in the Board of Education, Aines Barron, so I just want to acknowledge that. I told her when I asked her to marry me, no was not an option. I wasn't accepting it. So, I'm thankful for 40 years of happily, no, the first two years was World War I and World War II. I lost them both. The last 38 years have been happiness and bliss. Love her to... And no, to get to fix the clock.
We, we, welcome Councilmember Barron, and also the clock's rolling.
Well, anyway, I want to acknowledge James Davis first. He was one who was very active in our community. He led a lot of Stop the Violence, Love Yourself marches, and I want him to continue to rest in peace. With that, I want to say about our retirees, we celebrated today, the retirees. We got a victory in the courts. The courts agreed with us. They agreed with this bill that I'm putting forward, saying that these retirees have a right to choice. And don't believe these union leaders say they won't be able to collectively bargain. If they don't do that, they don't need to be the leaders. Don't believe that this is an illegal bill. This has been the same kind of legislation, the same kind of policy that lasted for 57 years, and the city paid for it. So, now, all of a sudden, the city doesn't want to pay for it, pit active workers versus the retirees is bogus. It's not true. The city has money for both, and I want to encourage you to turn in your 1099s. That's my bill. Support the retirees bill. On a real serious note, turn in your 1099. Don't be afraid of the unions. Don't be afraid of the mayor. These are the folk who were in the streets for you, crossing guards, lunchroom attendants, teachers, sanitation workers. We got a victory in court, and we should follow that because the people elected us. This judge didn't. The people did, and we should follow the suit of this judge. Sign on to the bill, write on to the retirees.
We'll now hear from Councilmember Brewer, followed by Councilmember Kagan.
Thank you. I too want to remember James Davis. It was a hot day in July. I also want to thank the officer who shot his assailant. He stood right there and point-blank, with lots of people on the balcony, had a perfect shot. It was quite, quite a day, but there were some heroes, and he was certainly one of them. I want to mention three interns. We have Tanay Rodrigo, who is a prep, pre-prep student going to Deerfield Academy. We have Jenna McCormick, who is a Hunter College Roosevelt Scholar, and Gregory Seawold, who's at Maris College. And they're some of our 29 summer interns. I think they're in the balcony, and I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Kagan, followed by Councilmember Carr.
Thank you. Today, I'm privileged to introduce Bill 1124, which will require Commissioner of Information Technology and Telecommunications to submit four quarterly reports to the mayor and the Speaker of the council on the number of complaints received by 311 Customer Service Center about abandoned properties, and also number of these complaints by council district. This is a critical problem affecting numerous abandoned properties across New York City that became eyesore in so many of our neighborhoods. The presence of abandoned buildings poses structural risks and gives rise to a host of health and safety hazards. The infestations of rats and rodents, attracted by neglect and lack of proper maintenance, cause property damage and increase the risk of disease transmission. Moreover, squatters within these buildings exacerbate the situation, often leading to hazardous conditions that endanger the squatters themselves and, of course, neighboring communities. So, I encourage all of my colleagues to co-sponsor this legislation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Carr, followed by Councilmember Narcisse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to add my thanks and congratulations that the Speaker offered to Angelina Martinez Rubio earlier. She's been a great colleague here at the council, and I look forward to continuing to work with her as she starts her new chapter. Nothing but the best for her moving forward. I want to call on my colleagues' attention to introduction 1120, which I'm introducing with Councilmember Farrah Lewis. This would require that DOT assess any speed camera location for a speed reducer, which is a speed hump, speed cushion, or elevated crosswalk. And if it meets the standards for installing them, install them within 125 feet of the pertinent camera. And then to report by the end of the following year on any data related to whether or not that camera is still justified as a result of the installation of the speed reducer. They'd have to do 100 a year, chosen at their discretion. This is based on an incident in my district where I asked DOT to study for the installation of speed cushions in front of PS26 in the neighborhood of Travis in my district. They approved it, but said that it had to be at least 1,000 feet from the speed camera, far from, you know, the proximity of the actual school building, which was the whole point of the request. So, I don't want there to be any obstacles for why we should be introduced, why we should be installing a needed speed cushion, speed hump, or elevated crosswalk. That should be the priority. We definitely want our streets around our schools and in other places to be safe. So, I asked my colleagues to sign on to this legislation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we'll now hear from Councilwoman Narcisse, followed by Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you, Majority. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for your leadership. You lead by example, and I appreciate for taking a stand for what the city council came here to do. Intro 1125 would remove all criminal and civil penalties for jaywalking. Jaywalking laws have been enforced in overwhelmingly racist manner for years. In some years, over 90% of tickets were issued to people of color. This selective enforcement should end, and intro 1125 will end it. Let's face it. No one has ever said, "Thank God they cut that jaywalker," and we all do it. If we park our car across in the middle of the street, we do not go at the corner to cross. Police should focus their attention on violent criminals and enforcing laws that negatively affect the quality of life of New Yorkers, not playing crossing guard in only some parts of our city. I urge everyone to cross carefully, of course, as a nurse, I want safety, and look both ways. Yield to vehicles and protect yourself while crossing. But let us remove this antiquated law, which does little to protect us and only contributes to racial bias in policing. So, I wanted to bring attention to all my colleagues to help remove that. And of course, intro 1127, 28, we still have to concern about air quality in our city of New York. And I say, Aines Barron, thank you for your leadership, as I see you, and thank you so much. And have a nice, blessed, and safe drink water because it's hot and humid. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you. So, District 32 has had a number of very sad happenings in this month. We've had the loss of some young lives. Ava Conklin, who's 19, who was struck and killed tragically by a vehicle while waiting for her sister to get off a bus. We've had a number of drownings. My neighboring council member, Silvina Brooks-Powers, I urge you all to sign on to her bill, intro 1119, as I will as well. We had a 14-year-old that lost their lives and a 19-year-old. These are both drownings, who is hanging by a thread, fighting for their life. In addition, we had a shooter who rode a scooter from Councilmember Nurses' district throughout my district and into Councilmember Williams' district. The family of Shay Hamood Ali Saidi, I know you're here. I know you can hear me. I give you my deepest condolences on the loss of such a wonderful, kind man. And you know that, that we all stand in prayer with you. In addition, there were others who were wounded, and they are still in critical condition, so our prayers remain there. Finally, I'd like to just thank the NYPD for their swift capture of the alleged shooter, and he is in custody. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak on general discussion today? Okay.
I do. Me? Riley?
Oh, sorry. Councilman Riley.
Just real quick, just want to alert everyone that we have some youth entrepreneurs out there today. Oh, all right. I'll be quiet. My bad. Go ahead. I could do it. Thank you. We got some youth entrepreneurs out there today. Last year, Councilmember Stevens, Williams, Lewis, and myself advocated for a million dollars to partner with partners,[1741.01]